Public health planner, as was mentioned before, and I work for the planning department. I have my coworker, Sherry Meads, who has been working with us in the same general plan draft and who's part of the planning department too. And we want to share with you today all the process that we have gone through to create what you're going to be looking at today. And I am going to start sharing my presentation. Sorry. There we go. So for today's agenda, we have a bilingual presentation just for if anyone in the public would like to look at the presentation in Spanish, so you're aware of it. And if you require any specific translation for the things that we have in here, please feel free to stop me and we'll do that too. We're going to talk today about five specific topics. Number one, the background on the general plan update, so you can know where we were and how we got here, because it's been a two-year process. And we want to let you know like how this process was created, why are we here? Why do we have a general plan? What is it? And why are we presenting here today with the Art and Public Places Committee? The draft general plan introduction, just to let you know what is this document and why are we presenting it here? Third, how we have been doing community involvement in terms of how do we involve most of the community members to know that this exists? And how they can be engaged if they want to, of course, but not letting anyone be excluded from the process? Because we know planning is a complicated process. And we also know that there's a lot of people, including young people, who usually don't know that this is happening and this is a process that will impact them in the next 30 years. And everyone here in this table and in the community. So we want you to be aware of it and help us spread the word. Number four, we're going to tell you a little bit about art as youth civic engagement. This was a partnership that we did with the Public Art Program to do community involvement. And we wanted to show it to you. We have not done so in the previous presentations, because we were not done yet. But now we are, and we're the first committee or board that is going to receive this presentation. I hope you like it. The next one is going to be City Council. And our next steps, where are we going to go after this? So just for people who are not familiar with planning, what we do in the planning department and planners in general is we think about how to plan communities and what does this mean? Basically, where are we going to place parks, jobs, housing, different types of shopping spaces, entertainment, and in this case, art too, right? So we know that this is something that has been done for a lot of years. Usually not as an interactive way as we are doing it these days. And this because of a lot of changes that the state has gone through, but also because there's a different style of planning these days. And for us, the general plan update was an opportunity to do this in a way more comprehensive way and to also provide an opportunity for our community to rethink and revisit planning policies and programs, which is what you're going to see on the draft. And the goal that we had with this program or this project, the general plan update, was to think about how we want to improve Santa Rosa. And that's why we call this project Santa Rosa Forward. In Spanish, we call it Santa Rosa Avanza. And we wanted this to be a very inclusive process of the community. So you know, the general plan process went through different steps. We are right now on the draft, but this has been a two-year process where we have been doing different steps to get to where we are. Number one, we decide how to engage the community. Because we wanted this to be a community-based plan, we started thinking, how are we going to involve community members? And then next steps. We created an existing condition report, which is basically a document that has every demographic information that you need about the city, every information that you need about geography, about disasters, earthquakes, whatever you think that you would like to know about the city in terms of statistical information, as well as any other type of demographic or physical or geographical information. Please go there and look for it. It's an amazing document. And then we created a vision together with the community. That was the first part of involving community members. And we asked people, how do you want Santa Rosa to be in 30 years? And we've got amazing responses. We'll show you what ended up being the final response. And then we went through a process that is much more planning focused. But I want to give you a quick explanation of what that means. And it was a land use and circulation alternatives. I'll show it in a minute. And then we went to a preferred alternative. How do we want the city to be growing in the next 30 years? And by growing, I do not mean only housing, but also where are we going to establish different community spaces and different things that the community needs, including services? And this got us, after this process, to get into the draft general plan, which is a document that I'm holding in my hand that has goals, policies, and actions, and that basically is going to guide what the city is going to do for the next 30 years. This plan is a draft for General Plan 2050, which means once it's adopted, it will last for 30 years with the horizon of 2050 being the end of this general plan. That said, I am just showing this so you know what documents you can find on our website. We have a community involvement strategy. We have an existing conditions report, which is a document I mentioned about all the data that you can have about the city. We created a briefing book for people who don't want to read the whole document, but are like, oh, I'm interested in knowing some information about the city of Santa Rosa. Our vision statement, which is what we build with the community, the Alternatives Workbook, the Alternatives of Growth that we showed to the community, and the Preferred Alternative, which is the final step that we had before getting into our draft. So you know, the vision that we created together with the community is shown in the screen. And I actually like to read it, because I think it's a vision that I like about my city and that I would like other people to think about while we're talking about the documents and the policies that are going to get us there. And so what we got from all the words and workshops that we had with the community was Santa Rosa is a diverse, equitable, and sustainable community built on civic engagement that empowers everyone to provide and support equal and affordable opportunities to obtain good housing, education, and jobs, and to enjoy vibrant cultural events and arts, and to live healthy lives in resilient neighborhoods that adapt to social and environmental change. So this was the vision that was created. And this guided us to the alternatives, meaning the options that we gave the community to think about growth inside the city of Santa Rosa. So for people who are not familiar with state processes or connected to housing, we have to fulfill a certain number of housing units that we have to build during a cycle of eight years. And so we have to tell the state of California, we're going to build this amount of housing that you requested us, and it's going to be allocated in these spaces. So based on that, we had three alternatives that were created for the next 30 years. The first one, establish corridors. That means focusing growth and all the changes in the corridors that connect the city. Second, neighborhood main streets, which means focusing our growth in the main streets that the community has, where the neighborhoods are already built. And last but not least, housing everywhere. This we consider is kind of the status quo right now. People don't really, are not really told where exactly they have to build. We just know there's open spaces or parcels where people can build a space if they own them or they can buy them and build in there. They just can do it, and there's no strategy on how we do that. We don't have it in here, but the final draft, and I'll show it later on a map, was a combination of the first two, meaning we mixed established corridors and neighborhood main streets, which means the city is going to grow throughout the main corridors. And we decided to do neighborhood growth around some areas of the city that we call areas of change. Meaning that you know Santa Rosa is a large enough city that we cannot walk or bike or wheel to all the city in less than 15 minutes. So what we are thinking in terms of how we created the areas of change is defining areas where people can get access to every service or need that they have in a biking or wheeling or walking distance, so that we have a reduction on our emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, but also put people out to have healthier lives. And in the policies that you will see connected to art and culture, you also will see that we included having access to art in these specific locations. And I'm mentioning this because I think this might be something that you want to know later on. So we get to the meaty part of this presentation. This is the Santa Rosa General Plan Draft. And the way that it's organized, so you know, is chapters. The state requires us to have eight elements. Actually, it requires nine, but the city of Santa Rosa only requires to comply with eight, because we are not one of the most polluted cities in the state. And mostly, the San Joaquin Valley requires an air quality element. We don't require to comply with that one. That said, these are all the chapters that are included in the General Plan 2050. And we have Land Use and Economic Development, which is the first one. You will see that the required ones are in green. The red ones are something that we are bringing from our previous general plan that already exists. And yellow is the elements that were not required in the past, but are now required, and we are including them in our general plan. The second chapter is Urban Design, Historic Preservation, and Art and Culture. Circulation, Open Space Conservation, and Greenhouse House Emissions Reduction is for the next chapter that includes all these elements. Safety, Climate, Resilience, Noise, Public Services and Facilities is another group of chapters. And Health Equity and Environmental Justice is another group of elements that is the last chapter, number six. You would not see housing in this draft. And the reason that you're not going to see housing is because the housing element, and you probably have heard this term before, and if not, I'm very happy to elaborate on it, is a document that is part of the general plan, but it has a different cycle. This one is a document that will leave till 2050. The housing element gets updated every eight years. So it was updated in April and approved and adopted by City Council and certified by the State of California a few months ago. So it exists, and it will be part of the general plan. We're just not putting it out again, because we will not receive comments from it again, since it's already certified. We'll open that again in eight more years. And that can be discussed again with the things that we hear from this engagement. So you know, we have goals, which are the ideas that we want to get to, to get us to the vision that you heard from the city of Santa Rosa. Then we have policies, which is a lower level of how are we going to do this? Which policies we need to implement? And finally, actions, things that need to be really concrete, and how are we going to do this? Just to remind you, this is a very high-level document that guides our city council and our decision-making at city level. But it has to be general enough to give the staff flexibility to work within the boundaries that we are establishing. That said, I'm just going to go to the content. And I'm going to show you two maps, so you know when we're talking about equity priority areas and areas of change, what we mean on the ground. So this map is our equity priority areas. What we did based on the Plan Bay Area methodology, which is the plan that guides us to as a city, following up on the Bay Area government's association, we are identifying the areas that are low-income and majority people of color and areas that are very highly polluted. Why are we identifying these areas? One, because we know areas where a majority of people of color live have been areas that were redlined, meaning they were separated from the rest of the communities and under-invested in the night services. Second, we're using also low income, because we know population has moved and things have changed, but we still can identify where lower-income communities are settled. And identifying these two intersections, we usually find the areas that are under-invested in our city, unfortunately. But we're trying to reverse what happened in the past, and we're trying to identify the areas to focus our investment on those areas. And this is what we are showing on the screen. The purple layers are our equity priority areas. That said, and you will see some intersection with this other map. Those are the areas of change, meaning the neighborhoods where we are going to focus our growth, as well as the change that we're trying to figure out to invest on infrastructure, so people can walk, bike, and go to all the neighborhoods that are in these areas, so people can have access to the main services that they require on a walking distance that is less than 15 minutes. So that said, you will see that some of these areas are similar to the previous map, and I'll show it again. Some others are not. And you will see that the east side of the city has some areas where we actually want change in terms of including mixed use and adding other spaces. You will see Oakland in there, which is an area that actually required us. They want us to bring mixed use to their area, because they feel like they're very far away from the services that are provided. And some people actually want to have walking distance services and have access to other amenities that the rest of the community can't have access to. That said, I'm going to give you a very high-level brief of what is included, the new ideas that are included on each of the elements or chapters. And for the Land Use and Economic Development one, I would like to tell you that it's bringing a lot of policies and actions from the previous land use and economic development elements that we had on our current general plan, but it also adds new things. Number one, require construction measures that make exposure to air pollution less severe for developments within 500 feet of Highways 101 and 12. This means our highways usually are the areas that have the highest amount of pollution. We're going to require our developers and the construction to have mitigation strategies, which means maybe sometimes adjusting windows. We don't know specifically what is going to be the requirement. We're just going to ask people who are in the development world to be able to mitigate this exposure to pollution, because we know asthma and other diseases that are being spread in our community are actually located with more concentration on those areas. And so following best practices from other jurisdictions and from the state, we're doing that. We're also supporting micro entrepreneurs. And this is something that is going to focus on neighborhood-centered businesses, which means also letting new job creations be part of neighborhood-focused strategies. We're not only investing on high-level businesses, but also like small ones and home-based and mobile food vendors, as well as community events that could be happening in non-residential zoning districts throughout the areas that we showed you earlier. For our element or chapter three, which is circulation and open space conservation and greenhouse gas reduction, we're going to have a lot of things focused on. Number one, circulation, how the people move around the city. Number two, open space and conservation, basically green spaces that help us with a lot of different things, but also greenhouse gas reduction. And our specific greenhouse gas reduction strategy, which is going to be part of this element. We have some goals, policies, and actions. I have to mention that starting the second week of October, we're going to have the document out just focused on greenhouse gas reduction. So you will see some of the actions in here, but there's a new element coming after this one to just talk about that specific topic. We know our community is very focused on reducing emissions, and that's something that we take seriously, that we'll have an update from our community and that will be included in the general plan. Connected to this, what are the new ideas in this element? One, prioritizing transportation, that is active transportation. We want people out of their cars. That's the reality. And for that, we need a lot of steps, including providing safe access for people to walk and bike and also take transit. So the investments for our community are going to be prioritized for those types of mobility. And so we know this is a big change, and we wanted to put it in here first, because then we will have to go and review formulas on how we provide money to the different construction and capital investment projects that we have throughout the city. Number two, we're going to continue reducing parking requirements. This is something very unpopular, and we know about it, but this is part of the strategy that the city is following to get to the objectives that we have on the greenhouse gas reduction strategy. And number three, but not less important, this is something that we have also heard as very controversial, but we're proposing prohibiting new drive-throughs through all type of services. And this is something that not only for greenhouse gas reduction, but we are also thinking about place making and how we want people to start sharing space. And this is consistent with the strategies that we're proposing. Number four, Urban Design and Arts and Culture. Urban Design, Historic Preservation, and Arts and Culture. This is kind of like the focus of the work that you do here, and we want to be mindful of this particular chapter with you. We wanted to let you know that this has three goals. The third one is focused specifically on arts and culture. And the new ideas that we have included in here are connected to urban design in terms of creating strips with large canopies of trees between the road and the sidewalk along commercial streets to support safety and place making, which is something that is more focused on planning. However, we also are trying to remove obstacles for owners of historical properties to support preservation, which is another part. And connected to art and culture, I would say we have a more comprehensive set of goals, policies, and actions that were worked with the Public Art Program team and who are trying to focus on diversifying the spaces where we are including art projects, as well as the voices that we're elevating through the Public Art Program. And I will let the team talk more about it later, but I just want to point out those things out, because I think this is one of the elements that is not mandatory, but that we have heard loud and clear from the community that they want this to be part of our decision-making and the priorities that the city is establishing. So just want to make that comment, so you're aware why we're including this. Our element number five, which is probably not the subject matter for this space, but we are aware that all the community is concerned and active and knowledgeable about safety, climate resilience, noise, and public services and facilities, and particularly because the fire PTSD that the community has, as well as the awareness about fires, is located in this place. But unfortunately, that's not the only type of built environment risk that we have in the city. We also have a fair amount of geologic and seismic activity, as well as flooding and emergency preparedness measures that we want to make the community aware of. And basically, the new ideas are focused on fire. And two of the things that we are proposing in here is creating opportunities to relocate existing development that are in higher fire-risk areas, meaning trying to convince people to have a retreat, which is basically buying property and taking it away from the fire-risk areas to avoid having to get in there in case there's fires, and to have a buffer space where communities can know in advance when a fire is coming and take advantage of that space to be able to gather safely in a different location. So I'm trying to be very non-technical with the words that I'm using, so that if anyone is hearing in the community, I don't know if we have anyone on the line in Zoom, but just to make clear that this is something that we're exploring. The second one is exploring options to prohibit more residential density in higher-risk areas, fire-prone areas. So we would be the first city doing this if we pass this through council. It's still out for public comment, because we want to hear from the community. So all the things that I mentioned are proposals that we're putting out there. But we're waiting for feedback from community members, as well as boards, commissions, and city council to make our final decision and create the final document that will be adopted by city council eventually. So last but not least, we have the Health Equity and Environmental Justice element. This element is a new one that the state is requiring every time that people adopt more than two elements of the general plan. Meaning this is pretty new. We have never had one. The only mandatory element is environmental justice, but we mixed it with health and equity, because we thought it was extremely connected to what we want to do in terms of the policies and actions that we want to have in the city. And the main ideas here are a lot, because this is a new element. But we're basically focusing on urban agriculture, food, as well as violence prevention and tobacco and alcohol restriction for community members, particularly youth and people who are vulnerable to any type of addiction. And we are also trying to implement a health-in-all policies measure, which means every decision that we make within the city has to be made thinking about people's health too. So talking about health, we're not just talking about the lack of disease, but trying to let people have lives where they can thrive. So that's a broader idea and something that would have to be implemented. But we're establishing here the goals, policies, and actions to get to that place. And just for you to know, what have we done in terms of engagement so people can start looking at this draft while we're here with you? And we appreciate the opportunity to share, not only with you, but the people who watch the videos and the Zoom meeting on the other side of the screen. And we have been doing bilingual community open houses, which means we've hosted events where we show these maps. We are there for community members. We have all the planners available, not only planners from the planning department, but people from transit, people from transportation, so they can talk to people and hear what they're saying. And we've done one on every quadrant of the city, so that there's access for people to be able to go without having to get into their cars. We have hosted one virtual event for people who are still not ready to go in person and still want to do Zoom meetings. We have had 10 pop-ups throughout the city, which is basically tabling, but we don't only table. We bring our whole set of maps so people can see what we're working on. And we have an online survey for people who don't want to read, but they want to provide their opinion on the main policies that we just presented. So we're aware a lot of people are not that interested in planning. We're not that interesting, we know. But we're trying to make it more accessible for people. So we're doing that bilingual survey, and it's on our website. We have a Convio app, which is a CD platform for people who are really nerdy about planning and want to get deep into it. And that's a PDF app that lets you provide comments like a PDF. So we're basically receiving all the comments. I think we have around 120 comments right now in that app. So we have a fair amount of people who are getting deep into the...
What app is that now?
The Convio app.
Okay.
That one is in Santarosafoward.com, yeah. And we're also receiving comments through our email, which is srforward@srcd.org, and our website, which is Santarosafoward.com. And all the things that I have mentioned are located in our website, and you can access any time to see them. And last but not least, we are going to wait to see the results of the survey and all the information that we got from the open houses and figure out which demographics we missed. So we're saving the focus groups to do a very last engagement with the folks that we probably didn't hear from, and that's going to be our last step. That said, I want to say that our work through the collaboration with the Public Art Team has been amazing. And in this partnership with them and Kinsey Creative, we have created a series of art engagements that are focused on working with youth from 5 to 24 years old. And we have been working with seven local artists to expand the participation of youth, which was the space where we were missing to hear from. We literally had 15% less of the actual population that we have as youth involved in the responses to surveys and participation on the workshops. So we decided to focus on very specific activities for them. A coloring book was created by Blanca Molina. And this is a bilingual coloring book that is targeting grades three to eight. And it's focused on health and environmental justice, so that young people can know what planning is, why are they supposed to be involved? What's environment? What is justice? How can they participate in the future of their cities? And we are taking these coloring books and we're analyzing them and gathering data from there to hear what young people are willing to, for their city to look like in 30 years. We had an art installation that was created through four art workshops that were facilitated by Erica Lutz and Brianna Hendren. And they were targeting high school students. And they collected the dreams and wishes of people in the next 30 years for Santa Rosa. And they created an amazing art installation that has been located. The first place that was displaced was in Courthouse Square. The second one in one of our workshops in a smaller version. And we will have a third installation that is going to be hosted during City Council on the 26th of September. And we'll have that installation for... And we'll have that installation for around six weeks, right? Four to six weeks, I believe. But that that will be available in our chambers. And last but not least, we have a song and music video that was created by Kayara Patton through the information that she got from four poetry workshops that she hosted in Sanarosa Junior College in partnership with the Black Union Students and the Juvenile Hall. This, the data collected was turned into a song in a music video that we actually have available if you're interested on on watching. And I have just a little bit of a couple of pictures from the coloring book. So you can see a little bit of the art that was displayed in this in this coloring book. It's a bilingual book, so half of it is in Spanish. And then you can turn it around and it's an English, Spanish and English version. And there's, I just wanted to show the map because I thought this was amazing piece of art that actually would let kids identify where they lived. And yeah, I think it's it's an amazing piece of 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 art, but also a very great way for us to gather information coming from our youth. And these are some pictures of the of the art installation that we had at Courthouse Square and some images of how people were interacting with the art and just also the amazing photography that we got by Genesis Boteo, who was the one who was taking pictures that day for for the event. And is it okay if I if I share the video? It's just going to take four more minutes and we're going to be done after this. Oh, I need to set the volume up.
I've never shared a video before.
What do we have to? Do I have to share it on the screenshot? Sorry.
Yeah, I've never done this. I'm like, oh, that's interesting.
Let's stop our share first.
Think so? No, we're good.
Okay, let's try.
But it's because I closed the microphone.
Well, this meets your laptop. But I wonder. Because see, this is still on. Let me. On me at the room since nobody's in here. And then at least it'll play.
Thank you.
Through Zoom.
No, no, no. I know what is going on. Sorry. I'll I'll do it.
Sorry, you you have something.
How do they ignore the lives of people striving for their lives? Trying to find possible ways around? Are they that blind to see the death threats rise?
How could they ignore the light? Could he need it to grow? Only darkness in sight. I want to know. And as I sit here thinking, it would be a slice of heaven with sustainable living. But clean process on the whole space for our children cease the gang and gun violence. Just a few things that I'm feeling. We at the bottom. Only way to go is up the water, pour the same, but we drinking out of different cups. My mental health is fine tuning. I'm flesh and blood, my God, I'm only human. It sounds a little crazy, but it's not impossible. And get some rest for those working in the hospitals. A violence red line barricades. I've been soaked in the pain, but healing is a marinade. The underpaid deserve a raise and a parade. The road to redemption, destination, happy days. We need space, we need rest. To rectify all the mess. We need a break from all the stress. So we can do what we do best. I want to know. 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 I want to know.
Today is March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, my last day in jail. It is a long day and my mood is happy and nervous. If you are reading this, you are hopefully a free man. I hope you're living in a house with a little yard. I wish your mental health will be better and that you're able to be treated when it isn't. I hope that you're married with two kids. I really hope that your family is happy. I wish for the well-being of Santa Rosa with better mental health services.
I apologize about that. Last but not least, I just You can't say it was a fun presentation. Um, we're good. So last, uh, next steps. We will summarize all the community comments and feedback. This includes yours today as well as anything that you want to send us after this presentation. We will have the greenhouse greenhouse gas reduction strategy for public review and engagement after this engagement set. And then we will go with our environmental report, report, public review. For for those familiar with our CEQA, this is a step that the state requires for us to to review before adopting the plan. And finally, we have, we will have a final general plan and final environmental impact report. And those would be finally adopted by the by our city council. And so this is it for for me. But if you have any specific questions or comments, we are here to take notes or about anything that you want us to do.
Yeah, I have a question for the chapter four, the chapter goals. And you have goal number four dash three. It's supported, empowered, thriving and inclusive Santa Rosa community connected through the power of art. Will this be with a collaboration with the APPC? And if so, what are your goals, ideas and wishes for that collaboration?
I think it's not only with with the APPC, but also the public art program as well as many other initiatives that we have had with local artists, that we will have with local artists or that I expect that we have. I believe that that one was worked together with Tara and and the team. So I I would also like her to to jump in if if she wants to. But for us, it's looking for alternatives on how we we involve community members. And we not, we know a fair amount of people are not interested in other topics necessarily from, for example, planning as we are showing today. But they might be interested on involving in art and try to identify alternative ways to have community involved. If that makes any sense, Tara, please jump in if you have any anything else to say.
I was going to say that that goal is a part of our vision statement that was developed through the public art strategic planning process. So that is our current vision statement. And I contributed a lot of suggested rewrites to the art and culture, culture section of this draft based on our current strategic plan so that there was better alignment with what the public art program has already identified through our process and our community outreach. That can be kind of policy level recommendations for considerations going forward as the city looks much, much farther ahead and broader. And I, they're they're not, I didn't take specific like strategies and tactics that we're currently working on implementing. I took the bigger, the general statements so that there's room for us each year as we are implementing our programs to make recommendations to other parts of the city on how we may be able to partner and approach some of the broader policies through an arts lens like we did the arts engagements for the for this project. So.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the question.
Yeah.
Just a bit of housekeeping first. I thank you for the presentation and do want to move on to questions from our committee. Thank you, Lisa, for getting that started. Since this is not an item that requires a motion, we can have open discussion on this topic. So is there anyone else who would like to ask a question regarding this presentation you just received?
I'm curi-, just curious. How many people do you generally have when you you throw the pop-ups for information about the general plan?
The pop-ups have been very variable. So for example, the ones that we have at the five K race, probably around hundred, a hundred and fifty people, I would say. Like it was very packed. The wildfire event, how many people were there?
Oh, the wildfire resilience readiness fair. We were parked in a place that people had to walk past us to go to some seminars. And apparently there were about four hundred people attended that. And then Santa Rosa Junior College Welcome Day, that was another one that there were hundreds of people. Then I banned one at Cesar Chavez Language Academy that was a food distribution that was not super well attended because people had other other priorities at the time. So as Beatrice said, very, very
So these pop-ups are not necessarily just for in Exactly. About the general plan, it's a a larger event.
It can be.
People are exposed to the
We're trying to get to where people are.
Right.
That's part of our strategy, kind of like knowing where people are going to go and just be there and be available for anyone who's willing to to talk to us. And I mean, we find locations where we can find people gathering like farmers markets, food deliveries, like we we do almost anything that comes up to our mind that we think like could be successful.
And then I think you mentioned the number one hundred and twenty. You said you had about a hundred and twenty people that actually responded to
Comments. We don't know how many people. I think less people than a hundred and twenty because the people who we have in there in that comment response from the Convio app. That's, I was talking only about the online app.
Okay.
Comments throughout the whole plan, I think we have around twenty four thousand.
Oh, we have a lot.
At me. Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, it's it's been a very long process.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Couldn't you speak briefly to how that feedback information is sort of metabolized within the organization?
Yeah. So for example, like today's, today's meeting, we collect all the information and questions and comments specifically that that we received. And we're going to gather after we end up the presentations after city council and just make a list of all the things that we heard and how we can change them and sit down with the document and review it and do do redo what we need to redo, add what we need to add, take off what we need to to take, as well as with community comments that will happen after October first because that's when the survey closes. So then we will go and gather all the feedback that we have from from community members in the survey as well as the workshops that we hosted. We hosted the workshops or open houses with a consultant team. So they gather all the comments and they process them for for us and let us know this amount of people want protected bike lanes. And I'm quoting this opportunity, this this specific comment because we know that's like one of the largest amount of of people who have mentioned something very specific. But then we have other comments where we need to bring the the experts to to provide feedback on. And we usually have a meeting with the tech, the technical advisory committee, which is basically every staff member or every every team from the city that has anything to do with the specific policies and actions. And for example, we need to check in with fire department to see if specific things that were required by the community can actually be done. So we also review if it's feasible to to do what the community members are are asking us for. And then we will come out again to show the 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 final document showing what what is, what was included and was not. It is, it is a process that takes a little bit of more like, it's not straightforward that someone provides some feedback and then that happens. Because if that was the case, there's a lot of of comments that we have about do not build any more housing. And that's something that we can't do just because it's our requirement from the state. And so we evaluate which things can be included and which things can't. And in some cases, it has to do with regulation and some others, capacity of of the staff to actually be able to do things. I'm putting, I'm talking about the example of of protected bike lanes and fire because that's been a very complex discussion where fire department can't put protected bike lanes everywhere because the 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 fire trucks can't go through through the area if the bike lanes, the protected bike lanes do not let them in. So it's it's complicated discussion that has to go farther. But I'm just setting this as an example of things that do not get in if they're provided a seat back.
Question. So regarding the art engagement, art as youth and civic engagement, the coloring book by Blanca Molina, is that available outside of the engagement process that you described? I'd be curious about facilitating a few of those.
Yes.
We have a couple of copies either between between the two of us that we can provide to committee members as a blank copy. If that, if you want to see that. I don't think there's still an opportunity to distribute them to gather data. We're past that because we've now compiled the data into a final report.
Yeah, yes. Unfortunately, yes, we we used all those and partner with a lot of different organizations that were not just people who came to our events. We partner with the summer camps, we partner with some schools. We partner with, um, the summer camps, we partner with some schools, we partner with Latino service providers, like a lot of different organizations and nonprofits and art organizations who helped us distribute them. And then for some of them, uh, we gave incentives to teachers so they, they would collect them and they were given a gift card by our consultants. And so they would buy pizza for the kids and, uh, they would buy like, um, party favors for the kids, things like that. So that they, it was, there was an incentive for them to give them back because we knew a lot of people wanted to keep them. So we, we, we had to, to do some strategies around that. But yeah, we have some and if, if you're interested, we're happy to do it. Because for us, that, that strategy is not only for collecting information, it was actually also a strategy to bring kids into the planning world in some way. And we've done other partnerships with school, with schools in the past, but I don't think they were as fun as this one. Because we usually did classes and, I mean, people pay attention to you because they're there. But I don't think it was as fun or as, as beautiful as it was done this time. So yeah, we're happy to, to share them with you.
Well, I'm curious if any of the art projects, um, sort of caused the members of the planning committee to reshape the way that they, their approach to the work or the way that they saw, uh, you know, sort of conceived of the, 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 the internal processes?
Are you talking about like our team internally or the planning commission, uh, specifically?
Yeah. Well, your, I guess your team internally.
Oh, yeah, I, I think for us, it, but at least for me directly, and I don't know, uh, Sherry, we had done something similar in the past in the department that you know of, but.
No.
It, it was for us a new way to figure out that we can actually, um, connect with a different set of, of folks who would probably have not come to, to the rest of the engagement, number one. Number two, a different way of collecting information that is pretty useful for, for us. Uh, a fair amount of policies that we created for the environmental justice element came from youth, from those, uh, workshops and events. I mean, I was there too, hearing with, with community, um, members and young people mostly were saying. And a big part of like urban agriculture and food came from, from what we heard from, from people. So yes, substantial information was, was, um, taken from, from those, um, workshops to other places. But I think the third part that I really appreciated personally was that we were not only extracting information from community members, we were teaching something, that the artists were, were teaching skills and, uh, art, uh, projects to, to the young people that they enjoyed and that they took, uh, aside from, from whatever, uh, planning information they received. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, what I'm sort of curious about is the extent to which, um, the engagement with the arts is primarily, uh, a question of distributing information or, you know, opening communication with a broader community?
Both.
Or if it has this other dimension of knowledge production within the process of, you know, kind of iterative design?
I, I think all of that, I think all of that. I mean, I, I'm sorry for the long answer, but yes, I think all of that. And a way where we identify, we can get to different audiences to.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'll just add that it really showed, um, the importance of doing this work because of how valuable it was and reaching, as everybody's already said, demographics that we maybe wouldn't hear from. And their input was so valuable. And just creating that partnership and also trying to, to build that level of trust with what, you know, the city is doing and that their voices do matter, you know, seeing this video made, seeing that art installation, that kind of thing. I think it's been incredibly valuable. As Beatrice mentioned, we've never done anything like this in our group. So working with Tara's team has really taught us a lot. And, and I'm hopeful that we'll just continue to do this from now on. So it's, it's groundbreaking for us, in my opinion, and super important.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I will now ask for a public comment on this item. Recording secretary, are there any public comments on Zoom?
Uh, we don't have any attendees on Zoom and no attendees in person.
Okay, great, that answers my next question. Uh, seeing none, we will bring this item back to the committee for any further discussion. Do any committee members wish, wish to ask any additional questions or make any additional comments? Been a really fruitful conversation so far. Thank you for telling us what's new.
I did have a question, um, where to go? Sorry about that. So the areas of change in equity priority areas, um, if the APPC were going to, what would you be your recommendation for the APPC to focus on? I, I'm assuming the equity priority areas. Uh, but how, uh, can we actually, you know, contribute or do some kind of, you know, collaborations for the, um, the areas that are planning for change too? Um, you know, to incorporate some kind of art and culture and, you know, what is needed? And that's it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. Thank you, thank you for asking. I, I believe that, um, a big part of, of what we're focusing our policies on is to, uh, put our, uh, money on our priorities where the policy is. So, uh, infrastructure is a big part of what we're trying to, to address in these areas. But I believe that, uh, if you plant projects, make sure that you include them. Uh, cause I think because of the, of the underinvestment that we have in, in, um, a fair amount of this, of the areas that we're mapping in here, a lot of the organization or events or things that are hosted throughout, uh, the city usually don't go there. And that's the areas where we have people who don't or can't drive or don't have access to anything else with public transit. And, um, making sure that we come to those communities, number one. But number two, that if we're not, at least we're focusing our outreach in there and letting people know that things are happening outside of that area too. Um, we've been also very mindful about bringing bus passes with us to events. So when we invite people to come to a workshop, come to an art exhibit, we give them, uh, bus passes as an, uh, incentive for them to be able to come and not have to pay for, for, for transit. And I, I know this is not gonna solve the problem substantially, but we're trying to figure out creative ways to break those barriers that we have. Because it's not only the location, it's also the access to resources as well as, um, the opportunities that people have or the cost of opportunity that people have. The other one has been, um, providing childcare. We know a lot of families are not available, uh, have no, no additional income available to pay for, for childcare. So all the workshops or events that we host, uh, we bring childcare to them. So this is just like additional information that maybe is useful for you to host or, um, have events or have art available. And if you wanna, you want people enjoying, like offering this other things that support, things that we have heard are barriers that people are facing. And, um, if it helps in any other way, language, uh, barriers for those areas, a lot of these areas are majority Spanish speaking or other languages because we have more than fifteen other languages that are spoken in the community. Not all of them monolingual speakers, but, um, that we have to be aware. And I think, um, just, just having access to, to those communities to also be able to get the information and the, um, understanding of what is going on.
Yeah, Lisa, I would also add that one of the things that I think the program would be interested in working with the APPC on is when we undertake the, uh, what, what was, when we continue our work on the, uh, public art audit project. Um, that's, uh, a mapping project that's crowdsourced. But the data that we will get from that and the maps we will get from that should identify, um, areas in the city where there is art that we didn't know about or there's no art at all. Or that, uh, we can identify those art deserts. And I think that that can be an overlay with the final draft of the general plan and the, the maps that, that we have from that. So that we're identifying the, um, the art deserts overlaid with the equity priority, priority areas overlaid with the areas, uh, the opportunity change areas. So that then when we do annual planning and set priorities and are deciding what projects to undertake, that we're considering all of that information going forward.
Well, how do we identify it, or define it?
We, yeah, I mean, it's not, we, it's a working definition right now. We don't have something that's set in stone. But generally, the idea is where there is a lack of public art.
Uh-huh.
Cultural resources, cultural facilities, um, spaces for community to gather.
Uh-huh.
Um, that's generally what we mean. But I mean, like there.
A direct connection to art, um.
Yeah, there's also art desert specifically to what the city has been involved with versus community generated things. And so that's a nuance that we wanna pay attention to because we want to be more equitable about where the public art funds are invested.
Yes, yeah, totally, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I add some, something to that? I, I have never heard that, uh, term, but I think it's amazing. We have been using it for food. And, um, the criteria that is used for food is having, uh, uh, half of a mile distance, walking distance from community members. So I know maybe the, the access to art is a little bit different because, uh, we don't have that amount of, of art as, as we have of like grocery stores that offer fresh produce.
Right.
But just maybe you, you can create a different, um,
Totally.
a different, uh, area and we can help you like figure out the mapping on, on that if, if it's necessary.
Great, yeah, yeah, definitely.
I have one up question. How is this, um, music video being raised? I don't know, you're, maybe people on the committee are doing it better than I do.
Uh, the, the strategy you started, um, last week, um, we're using it, number one, as promotion, but also as a recognition of the work that has been done, um, by the community. We're presenting it for, this, you were the first, uh, public space where we have, uh, uh, presented it. But we're gonna bring it to council too. And for us, this, this video is also a connection to the Santa Rosa Forward website. So we want people to visit our website after this. But we're also doing, um, promotion through our community, um, through, through our, um, communications team. So there, they did a press release, um, it was out on the news too. And it's been out in different places. We have, uh, posters that were created for, for us to share the video with community members and a QR code so they can like get access to the video. We, uh, you will see it next, uh, in the next few days on your, uh, water bill. Um, it'll be, there'll be a QR code, bilingual QR code, uh, that you can see on both sides and get access to the video too. And you'll see a few bus ads, um, that are already out there. I've seen, I think we have eight, eight buses that, that have the, the, um, the video on and the website. They didn't let us use a QR, but, uh, for the, for the buses. But, uh, but the, for the rest, uh, you'll see a, a, a campaign, uh, around the video. Cause we want, we are aware that, um, the planning side might be a little not that attractive for some folks or unknown world. And we wanna introduce people through, through a more, uh, like fun and, um, beautiful way of, of, of doing so. So we're using it as a campaign to pull, pull people to our website.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
As the, as the, um, the general plan comes to a close and we move into this kind of next thirty-year phase, are there, are, are there plans in place to maintain some kind of continuity with the campaigns? That, the kind, like this QR code on the water bill thing, but why? But like, I'm wondering if there are, if there's gonna be some continuity with the campaign that has sort of been developed to integrate people more directly into planning processes?
That's a really great question. We're not there yet, but, uh, we'll probably try to do that if you think that's something important for, for, for us to do. Um, for, for general plans, usually you have an implementation strategy and that comes after you have like finalized the, the, the plan. Uh, we haven't got that far in terms of how we're gonna do outreach for, for that part. I think our, um, engagement, a community involvement strategy gets to the end of the publication and, and adoption of a, of a plan, so TBD, but, um, I think that's a, that's a great idea.
I was confused, were you asking about like continued engagement?
Well, it seems like a big part of the upshot of, uh, sort of integration of various art projects and cultural forms into the planning development has been, um, a more robust connection with the general population. And I'm, yeah, curious sort of this, yeah, that one phase closes and we move into implementation. Is there more opportunities that might be generated to, you know, continue that work? And the reconceptions, oh, sorry.
No, I, I just, I think that's a really exciting idea. I mean, I feel like we carry those ideals and that goal with us with the work that we do with the public art program. Cause I'm always looking for how we're integrating with other city projects and policies and major shifts and change in, in growth or whatever we're doing. But it, it is not a built-in automatic thing. So potentially in the implementation plan, there's an opportunity to identify that there are certain goals um, we need to be meeting to, uh, you know, collaboratively approach the implementation rather than just siloing it into the departments that, that they would generally live in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, in terms of, I think, public art is so, I'm sorry, I think.
No, that's, that's, it's exciting, I know, I get all like, oh, and then we could do this.
Thank you guys today. This has been a really great fruitful conversation, really engaging our brains on how we can be implementing these into future steps and not keeping things in silos, but going forward with more cross-collaboration. So thank you, everyone. Uh, we are gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Um, thank you for your presentation. Uh, moving on next to item three point two, APPC task forces. Staff will facilitate a discussion about the ad hoc task forces, including history, proposed work plans, timelines, and what options exist for moving forward. The recommended action is information and discussion.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
That was great.
Well, I'm.
Keep in mind.
Yeah, we will, we'll check back in later.
Okay, bye. Um, okay, thanks, Kristen. I have, I know that this, um, sorry, I have too many packets. Okay, Eric, you could take one of these and then pass the other for now. Some of this you may have already, but I printed out the task force packets, um, which was distributed previously, but this, okay, so you can have it in front of you today. And then the new attachment that I created, um, to go along with this is kind of just like a history, a diagram to demonstrate the history of the idea of the task forces. So really today, um, we wanted to try to spend some time talking through what the best way to move forward with the idea of, um, these ad hoc task forces for the committee. Uh, you know, what, what's the best way to move forward? Um, and throw out some options and this can be a continuing conversation. Um, because we had a presentation that needed to happen before this item today. Um, we may wanna spend more time on this and revisit it at a future meeting. So there's no pressure that we have to figure everything out today. I, we just wanted to have this opportunity, come back to the committee because it was on a previous agenda. The item was kind of decided that it needed a, a set aside time to be discussed. And this can be the start of that and just know that we can revisit it again. We don't, we don't have to end on it. Um, nothing else to be finalized today. So, um, I thought I would just start by going over this kind of background diagram and then kind of see if there are ideas, if people have questions about the actual task force work plans that were distributed, um, if you still need more time to review those, like where we're just at with that. And I know that Jeff has been active in this conversation, he couldn't be here today. So, um, uh, and Paul, as a new member, I think would really benefit from hearing this conversation. Um, so again, it may be best to have this show up on a future agenda again with, um, continuing conversation. But for today, um, this diagram just kind of is a simplified version of kind of where we started, where the idea of the task force has originated, uh, and then where we are today. So I don't know if you can see it up on screen, but you have it in front of you. Um, the idea came from our public art strategic planning process as a way to strategically activate the Art in Public Places Committee to support the implementation of the plan itself. And, um, the goal coming out of that recommendation was to define the roles of those task forces, the responsibilities and expectations. And so, um, that plan was adopted in early 2021. And so then shortly thereafter, a couple months later, uh, the committee had a couple conversations at their April and May committee meetings where, um, we discussed kind of the task force model as a way to activate the APPC so that smaller groups of the members could meet and focus on specific items and tasks that helped us move forward, the recommendations of the plan. Um, and so the idea of the three task forces, which are diversity, equity, inclusion and access, community engagement and project development. Uh, those three ideas, uh, were, were presented to the committee and, uh, received support to move forward with that. And then members essentially signed up for which task force they wanted. And then members essentially signed up for which task force they wanted to initially serve on. So from um from those, from that time, from like May twenty twenty one, June twenty twenty one, um uh going through this this spring, so like two years essentially, the task task forces kind of existed. They met as needed, uh provided report outs to uh the full uh committee, uh met with staff, met with others in the community. Um and I think then about spring twenty twenty two to um this past winter, we started working with Kims and Creative and a part of their scope of work included mentoring and support of those tax task forces. So the task forces began meeting with either Kevin or Nico um as a part of that mentorship um support. And then I think feedback from the task forces received either by the program staff or by Nico's team. Um there seemed to be a request, kind of a consistent request for kind of clear work plans, like what specific action items can we actually start working on um or support? And so that that's what led us to um these draft work plans. Um the first document in those pack, in that packet is kind of an overview of why we developed the work plan, how to use these work plans, what the anticipated time um is as we work on these things, what the process is for requesting support from staff, um what the role of ongoing role of Kims and Creative would be, um things like that. And then each task force, the three of them, has a section that is a specific work plan. So it identifies what the objective is of that task force, what areas of our strategic plan were assigned to that task force, um and then actual deliverables and implementation steps to start taking. Um these were recommendations. They're not like directives per se. So the idea was that these would be a um the first step at documenting what a work plan could be and that each task force would look at this, figure out if there are pieces of it that they wanted to um break out, um to say, no, I can't, we we don't feel like that's a good fit for us right now to help prioritize. Um so it was a kind of like meant to be a starting point to work from. And so uh the, I think the question has come up just like, is this still the direction we want to go? Are the three task forces still appropriate focus areas? Should there be a different structure? More task forces? Different task forces? Less task forces? Um should should task forces go away and we focus our efforts kind of in a different way? Like there there's really kind of an infinite number of ways that I think this could go. But I think the goal still remains that there are areas of the strategic plan and there are just kind of general goals that the APPC has expressed an interest in, um which could be benefited by the idea of more active engagement by committee members on specific projects. So I think that if if there's, so so that's one goal. And then another goal would be, in order for us to continue um implementing our strategic plan, I think that support from the committee itself will benefit the plan, will benefit the program, will help us get through the implementation um in a kind of more meaningful way, but not necessarily the only way that it could happen. So that's kind of where we are at today. So I don't, the rest of the time that we have today, I know is relatively limited. Um we have what, like?
Fifteen minutes.
Less than fifteen minutes. So if there's a start of a direction you want to, you know, if you have questions, if there's statements you wanna make, um we can just start there and see what might be needed next.
Thank you, Tara. I'm gonna open it back up for discussion. So um we are taking questions.
Yeah, it was wonderful. You know, definitely, we probably could can start and figure out the teams and what we're doing. And it is too bad that we don't have the other people here to really focus on, see um people's strengths and what teams that they should, you know, go towards, you know, should we mix up the teams? Should we change this stuff, like sex stuff, like you were saying, you know, let's think, which way should we go here? Or how should we go about this? So we can, um this can be a discussion and talk about it and think about it. And um since we do have this this draft plan, um whichever team we're on, we can review this draft plan and see what needs to be changed and just focus on, um since there is the three different um task force, you know, each of the teams can focus on a specific task force to um the next meeting to wanna make changes and and um what else we should do or how do we go about doing that? Um any questions on that instead of um looking at everything?
Sure.
Just to be more specific and focused. And I know um I don't sure if you're on a team yet. And then since we do have so many other people, new people in here, it is gonna be kind of difficult.
Yeah, I think just just to refresh where we kind of left it, the project development task force had been Kristen and Nathan.
Uh-huh.
The community engagement task force had been Jeff. And then we were going to just kind of put double into Melanie's vacant seat. But that we, that was never really confirmed. It was just kind of, this could happen. But um but then we kind of started this conversation, so it wasn't really settled. And then the commu- um the DEIA task force was Lisa and Nan. Um and I think that, you know, without like putting you in an awkward position of saying, I don't wanna serve with that person anymore, um there's an opportunity to say, I'd rather be focused in this area. I'd like to switch task forces or whatever. So if if that's a conversation that needs to happen, um we can just start from scratch. We can say like, okay, task forces are going to be this, this and this. Who wants to sign up for what? We can do the same kind of process that we did before. Whoever signs up first gets that spot, kind of a thing. Um so I mean, there is an opportunity to shake up who's doing what. But I think I um would like to have a kind of a consensus from the committee that we should go in that direction to begin with, that we should have the same three task forces, that we should have a general work plan like we've started developing for each one.
Mm-hmm.
Um I feel like we kind of have to start over in a way before people are kind of committing to their same task force again.
Yes.
I agree.
Um so yes, I think that's a part of what will come. But yeah, I I kind of, I mean, if if there's, with the folks that are here today, if there's a general interest in just taking more time to review and make notes on the current drafts and then coming back at our next meeting to have a continuing conversation about it, that's definitely one way that we can go. Um or if there's folks here who are just like, no, this is really, this feels like way too much work. I could never put my my time into this. Then I think we need to kind of revisit what the purpose of the task forces should be and kind of start with that conversation. I mean, I know there's a lot of like variables, right? There's a lot of options here. So like I kind of wanna break it down into what is most helpful to do next before we decide the next several steps after that.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think clear objectives and milestones are just a necessity. And for me, that inviting out that that OPAF, Alternative Arts Space FARA and kind of, you know, seeing that, realizing that was was a way to workshop, you know, what kind of resources are available through this. Like, you know, with how we might partner with other organizations, like how can we sort of bring a broad range of communities and sort of cultural practitioners together? And I I didn't get a clear sense of, you know, what those things might be in the process of realizing that project.
Well, I know one of the other questions that you that came up, I think from you last time was what funding is available
Yeah.
to support the work of the task forces? And I think that should be a consideration and a and a question we could we resolve maybe after we figure out
Yes.
if these are the right task forces, if this structure works.
Yes.
Because then I think we can look at the rest of our uh annual plan and expenditure plan for this year and go, well, well, these these line items with, you know, what, five thousand dollars is associated with it, that fits the objective of this task force. Let's funnel those funds to that because that that work plan is not specific enough in a lot of the areas where it says exactly what that is meant for. It's general, it's like, you know, incentivize engagement. Um uh do things that invite the community into learn about what you're doing. Like that could take many forms, right?
Yeah.
So if a task force is working on something, then we can say we can identify that those funds can go towards something like that.
Yeah, I think that's great. And and we could even extrapolate that into seeking out community members who are looking for funds potentially or have an idea that they wanna realize and and creating distribution networks that way. But that's very helpful.
So when you're saying that you're into objectives and milestones, is that kind of a vote for this structure?
I I think a lot of work has gone into this and the and the potential is there. It's just a question of whether it's activated in a way that
Yeah.
things start to happen.
Yeah. I think that it's, my sense of it is that it's it's a good outline and it is also overwhelming at the same time. So it's like, it captures the idea.
Mm.
It outlines very specific things, but when you look at it all together, it's like, how can we do all of this? At least that's my sense of like certain committee members' reactions to it, so.
So I would like to echo what you had voiced before about, you know, an option for today of allocating more time for our team to review these uh this document as it has been presented. And I know something that would help me as I think about this to combat some of that overwhelming nature uh would be to assign some of these goals or task force assigned areas around like an event or around something that is timely. Um that might be a better way for us to see and see how something works in time. Uh to say like, okay, well, we know that this event happens each year. This event has to happen or does happen annually. Um does this, is this an opportunity for collaboration with the APPC to acknowledge some of these goals that we've set out? That might be an easier way for us to get started or get more momentum.
Sure, I I I totally hear that. I mean, I think that we can, that may not work for all of them, but I think that there's definitely an overlay that we could provide with like what are, what the actual work plan is, what are the specific projects and programs
Mm-hmm.
um that are kind of on our uh to-do list and and then kind of line up the assigned areas with those. And then instead of like, in instead of saying, okay, well, one of your assigned areas is like to increase community engagement. Okay, well, that feels really broad. And while there are concrete steps to start taking, which I think this does start to do really well, it breaks it down step by step. Um it it is a little bit more in the abstract rather than, like you said, tied to a specific event or project. And if that is helpful to have that overlay with it, I think that that's something we could have to prepare.
So I would implore our committee members to have more tangible kind of thoughts about this rather than letting the nebulousness out.
Well, I think, yeah, and if, so we can do it and you can do it too. If you wanna start by reviewing it in more detail, looking at it, you're assigned or each assigned areas with our current plan that you adopted at the last meeting. Because I think that if you are also considering the things that we would be looking at, then maybe you'll trigger some ideas that would be helpful.
That's, okay. That's very cute.
Yeah. Is that agreeable to everyone else? Or does that help?
I love that idea. I totally support your idea that you that you mentioned to Tara. I think that's great. It's something more tangible. And so we get this idea on how this works and how it goes along and just get that picture and be a part of it. Then for us to go out there and do what needs to be done, it'll flow a lot easier and better. It's just, you know, because questions will come up when we're present within something and that wouldn't come up when we're just discussing here on paper. Um and then also too, with what Nathan had to say earlier too, um we realize, you know, we do have this outline and what his questions and, you know, his concerns was, I mean, yeah, I totally agree with you and what you just were talking about, your question with Tara and the um uh regarding these task force and um just a clear objective. So.
Yeah, I think I think that if there are more overarching objectives that you feel are needed, please, you know, bring 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 that specific kind of like what's missing, like what do you need to help? Cause I I think in previous conversations with some of the committee members, there was a kind of, um I I think it kind of broke down into either like, we're not really sure how to operate within this structure as volunteer committee members. And I totally under, I know, I totally understand that. So if the objective needs to be clear, that helps clarify that part of it, like your actual role, that 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 could be helpful. But then also, I think, um like the the kind of more um objectives in terms of, like you said, milestones. Like it's like if 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 there's a goal to get to by a certain time related to a project, like you're saying, like I think then you can kind of work backwards and go, okay. It, I mean, it 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 takes, it takes it into a little bit more like a action oriented, smaller chunks. And I think that that might be helpful too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so then I'm wondering if, you know, since we're discussing this and we're thinking, yes, since the, we have already had the outlines and there's so much work that has been done on these task force and we decided to do it, um and all of us are gonna be reviewing, there definitely uh should be an email to all members stating to review all of this and kind of give us an idea if there needs to be teams that needs to be switched or someone wants to focus on a different one or which, where would you like to see yourself? And what is your priority? What are your strengths? And um what would you like to tackle? I don't know.
Yeah, so I think like, for instance, quarterly October meeting, which is just in a short week.
Yes.
Weeks, we can have, I don't even know. It's coming up. No, it's not. That this, we could have this again on the agenda and then again in November. I mean, it can be continuing. There isn't, I mean, currently, the the goals and objectives of the committee don't have like an expiration date. This is an ongoing thing. Um but I think that as we start tightening things up and and connecting them to actual events or projects, our programs, then those timelines do start coming into play. So I think that if we take the time now to really um have have an email that goes out to the committee um tomorrow or Monday that says, you know, please, everyone, for the next meeting, please review these, bring, you know, edits, comments, suggestions, but then also think about what are your strengths, what, where do you want to invest any extra time and energy that you have in these task forces so that you can start thinking about that um for the next discussion.
That sounds beautiful.
Anything else you wanna add?
No, um but that will definitely be Monday and not tomorrow.
Yeah, no, yes. Great. While we're still on this item, I will now ask for public comment. Recording secretary, are there any comments on Zoom?
Uh no attendees on Zoom and still no attendees on in person.
Great. Thank you, Lonnie. Uh seeing none, we'll bring the item back to the committee for any further discussion. Um does anyone else have any additional questions or statements that we would like to put into thought about what what content should go into that email that will go out on Monday?
Maybe tell everybody, speak now or forever, which you're gonna be put in teams?
Yeah.
I I just wanna make a comment and maybe in the form of a question in that we have three proposed task forces. We have, how many people on this committee?
Seven.
Seven people. So we'll have like two or three people on each task force. And it seems like a huge job for two or three people to, that's just my comment.
Yeah.
So I think that's something to consider when we're considering how we wanna move forward with this. That's just my initial reaction to to looking at this and thinking, okay, where do I?
Yeah, and I think some, that's some of the feedback that we're looking to have a discussion about is, is the scope of this reasonable?
Right. Right.
And.
And how do we prioritize if it's not? So I think that that's input that would be helpful from committee members, especially um as as so if we're in a state of things where really no one's assigned to any task force right now, it's, we're starting, we're starting over.
Right.
Then I I think it's most helpful to have all committee members review all three work plans.
Right.
And provide as much input on, you know, this is all important, but we can't, you know, this is a big, this is a big workload for not paid committee members, right?
All the years.
Like, your suggestions on this should really be a staff person doing this. This should be a consultant. Can Kim and Kims and Creative do this? Can another consultant do this? Um, or this area seems most important and would let committee members start meeting, members of the public in a different way. Or like having your input, everyone's input at that level on each item, on each step that are, that's identified in there, that's most helpful to, I think, us because then we know how to better than support what you really want to be doing as a part of this committee. Like, why are you all here? Why are you serving on this committee? Everyone has their own reasons.
Right.
Different objectives, different goals, but if there's a way that you can feel more, it can be more rewarding for you, more active, you can get out and meet people, or you can do research projects behind a desk, like what is it that's help, that you want to do?
Okay.
Like, bring that information because I think that we're just trying to help the committee
Do its job.
do its job and to feel activated, like you're doing something.
Okay.
Good.
But if we don't know what that actually means to you, it's, you know, we start with something that's like, well, here's, let's stab in the dirt, guys, you know?
Let's do it all.
Yeah, and it's a lot because that is, I mean, we're we're constantly like, wow, our work plans are huge. Okay, we have to prioritize. We can't do that for five years. Great, take it off the list. I mean, that's the daily thing we're doing, so of course it kind of shows up for the committee as well.
Yeah, okay. Right.
So I think those key things are what would be the most helpful to hear from each committee member when you can provide us with feedback over the next couple meetings.
Okay.
What's the largest sort of demand slash pressure on your time? Like, where's the first?
I know, I answered that. Um, okay, that's complicated and I'm just gonna go for it. Um, number one, I think, is Jessica's a contractor. She's not a an employee.
Uh huh.
That is very limiting.
Uh huh.
She needs to, this position, whoever it is, hopefully Jessica, it needs to be a permanent city position.
Uh huh.
Having one regular employee, my my position, that isn't even one hundred percent dedicated to the public art program means that we have very limited resources. It means that we can outsource to contractors like Jessica, even though she's performing the function of a ongoing program
Yeah.
support that should be a regular employee, um, core services. Uh, um, it means that we can hire consultants like Nico and other consultants who come in and do specific projects or do a strategic plan. So we have that flexibility, we have that uh ability to do contracts. But when we're looking at actually like the core services, there should be another position at at the least. Um, for my position, I mean, I have, there's a lot of programs, as you remember from that hand-drawn diagram that we've looked at through our annual planning process, there's a lot of program areas that fall under um my responsibility. So we have special event permits. That should not be a part of the public art program, in my opinion, but that's been assigned to me and has followed me for years, so get rid of it. Um, so I mean, like, I I can, I can tell you like honestly that those things should change. Whether or not they can with the current environment that we're in, the structure we have within the city, the workflows, the budget, the city's overall budget situation, I don't know if any of those things can change. But in a perfect world, those would be the the top items that I would address. What what is assigned to me, including removing special events from my uh uh plate? And then creating, um, having a a permanent position added for the work that Jessica performs.
Is there a way that we as individuals or as a committee can lobby to have a position?
I don't know the answer to that right now. I think that if there's a, if there's a path forward for that, I I can try to find that out and let you know. I think it generally comes down to the city's budget. And um taking on a new position means a commitment long term that the city has to kind of pencil in and pencil out for for like thirty years, you know what I mean? And includes pension and benefits. So there there, it's not just a simple, like, look, there's an ex- there's extra money here this year.
Right.
It's not something that's.
We can use it for that. It's not that simple. So I'm not exactly sure the process uh by which committee members, I know that general public, as as a member of the general public and and saying that and not affiliating yourself with the Art in Public Places Committee per se, you have the opportunity to come before council during its annual budget study session um and budget planning every year to say what you're interested in seeing the city spend its money on. Um, but but you can't really represent the committee. You can represent yourself as a private citizen. So I'm not exactly sure what the process is for the committee to try to advocate for things. I I can try to find an answer though and let everyone know.
I mean, I think it would, you know, help if that, if that's a way to help get it to happen.
Mm-hmm.
It would be nice.
Yep.
But it sounds like it's a.
Yeah, and we've attempted through our
Stumbling block or something.
processes and it hasn't happened.
I'm sorry?
We we've attempted to do this ourselves on this end and unfortunately, it hasn't happened.
Yeah. I think that there's um, you know, just in in terms of looking at the strategic plan and implementing it, what other projects come up that we have to allocate our time to, even if it's not a like funding request necessarily. Um, I think that that can be also um considered by the by the committee. Maybe the opportunity to do that is, um, you know, our our current strategic plan is essentially sunset. It's supposed to go from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. So like next year theoretically would be like the end of that plan. Obviously, we're not going to be done implementing it and it shouldn't just go away. But I think that there should be an opportunity for the committee to start having conversations about how does this plan get extended or live on farther than the three year, it would, three years it was origin originally envisioned to be? And how do we then prioritize what staff is doing? Because maybe there isn't a need to do something that we've been doing, right? Or maybe that when we get requests to do something like the project for Fire Station Five, we say, no, we can't do that. I mean, I'm not saying that that is what we should have done.
Right, right, I get that.
I'm, it's an example of how do we prioritize the opportunities that come to us or that we're asked to do? And if there's something that the committee is helping to put in place, like an extension of our strategic plan and each annual work plan, if that's very clear what we're supposed to do that year, it's easier for us to say no when the other things come up and we're asked to do them. So that's another way the committee could help.
That that was kind of what I was wondering. It's like weird that, like, how much latitude do you have to pick and choose between projects that come come across your desk and send your own agenda? And if it makes sense for us as a committee to kind of give your view around those questions and think about sort of redirecting the projects.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's not a lot of totally out of the blue, random things that are coming to us and we're like, yeah, sure, we'll do that. It really is all somehow related to what we're supposed to be doing, implementing the strategic plan. Or when it's a capital project, I think that that to me is one of the more interesting kind of um considerations is when there are city capital projects, how much do we want to advocate for and offer our services, either funding or staff time, to make sure art is a part of those projects?
And that's independent from the one percent for the arts?
Yes, because one percent for the art is private development. We don't get involved with those.
Yeah.
We get involved with when the city is saying, whoa, we're building a new courthouse square. We're building a new community center. And this is gonna come up really soon. We're building a new community center, library, fire station in Roslyn. Should art be a part of that? That would be a huge project. I don't know if there's funding. I don't know if the Public Art Fund would be asked to allocate funds to it. But if there's a desire to put art there, which I think there probably will be, how much can we support that?
One of the things I thought was kind of fun about today was that uh questions of definition about how art gets thought about and what kinds of feedback mechanisms might potentially be sort of latent within uh municipal engagement with the public. Right? And like opening up those questions of definition and how they get navigated to people as opposed to sort of plunking down a, you know, going through the design review process and plunking down a statue or whatever in front of the building is like exciting. I don't know how much room there is to, you know, sort of open up those kind of, it work, you know, complicated processes as as public, per se.
Yeah.
But that like, that's kind of interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it is.
And like putting a half of the, whatever, it's like, whatever that thing is on the water bill, like sends you a video they made, like. It's like, I mean, that's pretty out there actually and like interesting possibility. And it's not, probably not expensive if they just did it, you know?
Yeah, I I mean, I, this isn't really a part of this discussion with task forces. But I mean, I think it's related because I think that it's, the, to me, it's a bigger conversation about the the work that the the program, the staff are doing and what is in our annual work plan, what we're chipping away with, uh, we're chipping away on on in our um strategic plan. You know, our master plan is still a valid document. It identifies like areas of the city and different topics that should be the focus for public art. Like, how does all of that, then you add in the new general plan update?
Mm-hmm.
Then you add in new projects, fire stations, communities. I mean, there's a lot of considerations that come in. And it's like, I think if if I find it helpful, and we just don't have a lot of time to do this ourselves, but maybe it can be a joint meeting at some point, the um committee with the with staff to really just kind of like brainstorm and vision, like, okay, let's draw out, what are all of the sources that come in that provide ideas, direction, um, strategies, specific projects that we're being asked to, you know, like, put it all there. What are the outcomes of all of those things? What are they achieving? Are they in alignment with the core vision and mission that we've adopted? Um, are there funding sources attached to all of them? And then how do we prioritize? Like, because that's a lot. I mean, we we actually, Art San Rosa has a very robust public art program with a tiny little staff and budget.
Mm-hmm.
But we have huge collection. We're barely able to just keep it all looking okay. We don't have a registrar. We don't have a position that that whose job is actually to make sure all of our pieces are where they're supposed to be, that they're being taken care of, who the artist is. We, you know, we're, we're like, this is a shoestring, public art program. There are models in bigger cities that have more robust budgets um of how to really have a full um staff, fully staffed program. And I think that we're we're growing and we're seeing what we might need to add. We just unfortunately, I don't think, are in an environment in the near future that will be able to grow. So how do then we then temper all these grand things that we want to do, that we see that are needed to what's manageable? Um, and how to, how is the A P P C involved in supporting that through task forces or otherwise? How do we outsource work with consultants? Are there volunteer groups we can form alliances with? Like, the idea of toolkits was put in place so that we empower the community and artists to just do their own projects and that, right? Like, there's a lot of parts of the puzzle that we're trying to piece together. But um I find it helpful to step back every once in a while and just look at everything and go, okay, this is all a part of a much bigger thing and there's a lot of different moving parts and considerations. So maybe tackling the task forces with a, you know, bigger picture in mind would be helpful too. Tie it back to the task forces. So we might need to wrap up today because we're over time already. But I really appreciate all of your feedback today and we'll just keep, keep working on it.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
I would like to echo that and we'll move the meeting to the end of our agenda now today. Um, thank you for that presentation and discussion, leading that discussion. There is a lot for us to unpack and get back to you. So um with limited resources, so we will work on it. Um, I did see on the agenda that there is an opportunity for announcements. Is that okay to do one at this moment or?
Um, there really isn't on the agenda today, so.
I will save my announcements for our next regular scheduled.
Okay, sorry. If there's something you'd like to share with the full committee, you can email it to me and I can send it out to books.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving on to adjournment. The next regular meeting of the Art in Public Places Committee is scheduled for Monday, October second. Uh, we will stay tuned for location.
It should be back in our normal spot, but.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.